Recording in progress.
Call to order, the St. Joseph City Council meeting of November fifteenth, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's not hear from Bob, that's unfortunate. Item two, public comments, anybody wishing to address the council on items not on the agenda, please step to the podium and as you know, and step forward. Item three, approval of the agenda.
We move to approve.
The second?
Motion in second to approve the agenda, changes or additions or anything? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion prevails. Item four, consent agenda.
We'll move to approve consent agenda.
Motion in second on the consent agenda. Any issues or concerns?
I'd like to pull four D.
Okay, we'll pull four D. Approve that one separate. Motion in motion in second on consent agenda, items four A through four C, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion carries four D.
Yeah, so I noticed on donations that the Legion donated seven hundred dollars to the fire department for a new iPad. Is that? Um, so it's a good thing. Is it something that Chief, they offered, or we solicited them, or how did that donation come about?
They already told me to give something, so we purchased another one that I'll go in and buy another one or two.
And I'm assuming the fire department, or you send a letter to the Legion thanking them for their donation?
Correct.
And does the city do the same?
Usually at the end of the year, we send a letter to all the donors from the year. So I do have a list of everybody.
The letter comes from whom and who signs it?
Different. I've, I've sent like tons of letters and it comes from staff as well, so.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we
Yeah, we do.
As a city are acknowledging the Legion for what they've done for the fire department. So we can move forward on approving four D.
Good question. I had a question though. How do we, is that going to our computer list of stuff we have to cycle then after a few little while? Okay. Very good. Motion, oh sorry, so.
Motion to approve four D.
Second, motion in second to approve four D donations, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion does indeed carry. Thank you. Uh, item five. Winter walk. Please introduce yourself, Ray, when you get there. Please introduce yourself when you get there.
Sure. My name is Ray Shogren, I'm coordinating a winter walk for 2021. Um, last year during the COVID Christmas, we were scrambling as far as what to do and we put up trees around town, a number of folks came together and we put them on pallet stands that Joe Boy's poker run came up with. And one of the things we had to do was to come before the council and ask approval and work out all the details. I sent an email to all the council members, Mayor, outlining the things we went through. Um, I've been in touch with Dwight and Ryan. Our plans are to put, at this point, ninety-eight trees up around town. Uh, we learned some lessons from last year when they put the trees on pallets, it was a last minute thing, you know, we were all kind of scrambling, you know, what can we do? Um, and so we had somebody who did some research and found a way to build some stands that would be much more stable. So this last week, there was about a dozen of us that got together and built over a hundred Christmas tree stands that we put together. We'll harvest trees on Saturday. Um, I don't know what else to tell you. We've taken a look, we know about the ADA requirements and placing them, we've talked to folks where, you know, as far as who did the snow removal to work with that. Uh, talking with you last year, Mr. Mayor, about the liability issues, so we're moving forward with that. We've got a lot of cool things for winter walk, just briefly that we're adding, um, this year. We threw a lot at the wall to see if it would stick and kind of come up with. We thought that this would be the Christmas post-COVID, we're still dealing with some issues with that, uh, supply chain issues, inflationary prices. A couple of, or three really cool things that we're adding this year, uh, one of them is that we're, we're adding a Santa village. Uh, it's helping being sponsored by Bella Caccino and some others, Bad Habit. Uh, this is, if you folks have ever been on Highway twenty-three by Foley on the north side there, uh, there's a guy, Dan Haynes, who builds these really cool little houses. Uh, we had him design and build one for us last year. Uh, we asked him to, to be involved and he created a, a structure, is building it, and it'll go up against that north wall in the patio area, it'll be about sixteen feet by twenty-four. Uh, he'll design an entrance way to come in, uh, there'll be a carpeted area, so it'll be easy for the kids. Uh, we've secured heaters that'll be above, there'll be a Christmas tree, uh, in there. Uh, part of the permanent structure, other things that we can use, we can, uh, take this down in pieces, kind of like a scenery for, for theater. Uh, we can change out some things, should we go from a Santa village or put Santa back inside? Uh, with COVID, there were concerns about, you know, what do we do with Santa, what do we do with kids, uh, the whole brand and all that. We, we think we've come up with a really good solution. Uh, the other thing that we're doing that which is exciting, uh, is to work to add the theater piece. Originally, we were going to do theater outside at Bellows and then we decided to move it inside when we secured a mall and the night visitors. For those of you who are not aware of this, uh, production, it was originally, uh, written as an opera in English to go live on TV in nineteen fifty-three on NBC. Uh, in the early sixties artisans for the Queen of England created larger than life-size puppets. Um, I didn't bring things with me, I apologize, but if you Google St. John's Prep, uh, a mall and the night visitors, you'll see it. Uh, the story basically is a mall is a young child who lives crippled, lives with his mother in an oasis town, and the night visitor is the Magi on the way to find the Christ child. And, uh, it's, it's quite a presentation with the actors all dressed in black, the puppets, the orchestra, the chorus, it takes over a hundred people to do, it's, it's been quite a production and we're happy that Brother Paul and St. John's Prep are working on it. That'll be in the church, we'll do two productions of that. Uh, the other thing that we're adding in addition is, um, working with Dan, working with Bad Habit's mothers, replacing some of these structures around town that will have a Christmas guest village to it. The Boy Scouts will have one that they'll be selling Christmas trees and resell it, there'll be some at Bad Habit. Uh, again, we have the music inside at, uh, Heritage Hall. We've upgraded the quality of vendors that will be there, we'll have some music outside on, on the patio, uh, above Crew. Um, Santa, hopefully we can pull off. Uh, we had that little parade last year, which was great, you know, Dwight leading the way and everybody erupting into applause when Santa was on the back of Andy Lous's truck. Um, Andy's, uh, not doing well right now, he's ill. So we're working on a few little problems. We've had some head scratching times to figure out some stuff, but we think we've got a really good program set up and hopefully that continues to grow to be a, a significant, uh, little festival for our town.
Okay.
So we're asking basically for the approval and be able to use electricity. I'll be able to answer any questions regarding safety or anything else that people may have.
Is the trees just up for, for your weekend, or are you leaving them up longer?
I'm sorry, between my hearing and Mass, I've struggled all year.
I apologize. Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
How long are the trees going to be staying up?
The trees will be up roughly through about the tenth of December. We coordinate with the, with the church and the city people when we bring them down and depending upon how hungry your goats are, I don't know. It's where they went last year. Um, so that's what we're looking at, somewhere around the tenth of December.
January.
Uh, January, excuse me, yes.
So on that note, if, are, you're good, so with the removal of the snow, in case we get a nasty one, okay, perfect.
So, and you know, I think there were just minor problems, the trees blowing down last year and again, you know, we, I think we've done a lot to remedy that and we have people in place who, you know, go phone contact.
I've got a question. Um, so I see, you know, you're here for considering obviously the electricity costs and everything else. I saw in your email that you have eight to nine solar powered trees that you're trying this year?
Yeah, we had hoped to, yeah, we had hoped to do a lot more. We, you know, the frustrations with getting things and, and we ordered stuff back in February to get in March. Commercial grade lights, timers, other things that we didn't get, prices went through the roof, other things, so we kind of had to punt on a lot of it and so we're, we're going to be placing some trees in location that there's not electricity and we're going to be working with the Boy Scouts, kind of throwing it over them, okay, guys, let's problem solve, let's make this work. So they're going to be decorating a house and putting up some trees, so that corner on, on, uh, Minnesota, uh, yeah, Minnesota and College will be, uh, on that corner where they'll have, and it'll be a little bit more decorative, a bit more color, so we're going to try and do that.
Kind of trying to experiment with it, obviously maybe for future to be, like I said,
Yeah.
a hundred percent kind of solar power, I just thought it was interesting.
The lights that we have, I mean, I've tried some stuff at home and they work.
Yeah.
The lights that we have are not the kind we're going to invest in because they're not going to be durable. The, the lights that we have been buying, we burned through in the last several years, about a quarter of them. They don't stand up to the cold, the rigid, they blow, they need to be heavier wire, heavier plastic. You know, we had problems with moisture getting in one year, they damped out. So, you know, we've learned a lot with that and, and we need to get quality commercial product, but you know, if you can point me in the right direction, I'll be glad to go get them. That's just a problem. So yeah, eventually the goal is to move to that and do that. We think the technology's going to be there and, you know, one of our sponsors is Blatner Energy, so we're we're hoping we can, you know, move forward with that.
And then, we're okay with the cost of electricity for the, okay?
Yeah, I guess that was my question too, is what did it, I know it's probably miniscule, but what was it last year, do you know?
You know, we're, we probably spent about twenty-five dollars on electricity with the Christmas lights or holiday lights, even on the light poles when they go up.
They're all LED lights.
Cool.
Low energy use, so, you know.
Kevin, anything? So you mentioned a parade? Are you planning to do a parade? Cause it, are you planning to do a parade? Cause
Thank you.
Sorry. Well, it doesn't mention it anywhere here. You're asking for electricity, but you mentioned parade. Dwight? Eh, eh, you heard anything?
No.
Okay.
Yes, what we were, uh, what I mean by a parade is that we were going to put Santa on the back of, of the truck, the same way we bring him up. At this point, that's not happening.
And so, should we say it's not happening and not wait for like two days before the event to say it's going to happen? I mean, I, I, you know, it's preparation, it's cops, it's traffic, it's control.
Oh, yeah.
At some point, you have to like cut the string on it is or is not.
It's not. If, if that's where it is, you know, because of where it was, yeah.
Well, I don't want to scramble like last year and all of a sudden we have to, Dwight has to show up with somebody and escort the thing and we don't know where the map is, we made a map last year and.
Yeah, I wasn't, the parade wasn't my gig last year and I, and we've talked about that and some people have wanted that and I encourage people, if that's what you want to do, you know, jump on it. Our plate's been pretty full with other things.
Yeah.
And down the road, would that be something that'd be cool to do? Yeah.
Okay.
And it, it was pretty significant, but given some of the setbacks and other problems that we've had, ain't going to happen.
I just don't want to scramble at the last minute, that's all.
Yeah, well, we've been scrambling a lot, six weeks to do things, so we're, I think we're in a really solid place to have a quality program again. And, and I, and I appreciate what you're saying. So we backed off a number of things. When we got to the point where we said, you know what? We can't guarantee that this is going to be a quality, we, we backed off of that.
The, the event you talk about, the play at the church? Do we, or, or whatever that's called, the opera, the play, the?
A mall and the night visitors?
Mall and night, okay. Do we have night days, uh, when that's going to happen?
Yeah, that, we have the advertisement coming out this week. Um, uh, we've just got together with, uh, Mo Philippi. Uh, so the website will be updated, we've got a story coming out in the news leader that will be on Friday. Yeah, Friday at seven thirty and then Saturday at one.
Is, so this is the first we've heard about it, the dates, or?
I know about the dates, but I don't know if it involves law enforcement for anything at all.
Okay, I'm just wondering about traffic control at downtown, when we're doing those things, that's all. If there's a big crowd or not a big crowd.
He says it's at the church, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And most people drive. You know, I don't, I mean, so we have traffic problems today when we drop off and pick off kids and I'm just saying, wondering if it's the same thing, so.
We, we canceled on, on anything as far as
Yep.
closing streets or anything, just from the other issues that came up.
Okay.
So.
I just want to make sure that we're aware of it, that's all.
Yeah, we talked about that, what's going to happen that night. I'm not aware of anything other than we've done the other years.
Very good.
And we're not, we also backed off the amount of advertising that we're doing because we want to focus more on the locals and other things, you know, within the, the community.
Okay.
Is what we're trying to get.
Very good. Those answer my questions, yeah.
I got one more. And then I see you say you're going to have, is a jazz man playing at Crew for a couple hours in the balcony? Do you know times of that?
Private residence on the second floor, yeah.
Okay, do you have times of when that's happening?
Uh, that'll be from four until seven. So that's a gentleman who owns the private residence, uh, Mateo Macby introduced me to him and, uh, yeah, we're going to put a band up there and uh, they're going to put speakers out and, yeah, play Christmas songs. Um, it's the band, one of the groups that played this summer for, uh, um, the Monday market, yeah, yeah. They're just going to be doing Christmas tunes, so.
Counselors, are there the questions? Motion?
Yeah, I'll move to, uh, not consider, but to have the city do the cost for the electricity and then also provide the sand for the sandbags.
Second, very good, motion in second. Only one final question, Ryan, we okay with everything we got so far?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Motion in second approving the winter walk needs and wants. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Uh, item six. Uh, AED monitoring and maintenance.
Yeah, so Advocates for Health, um, they work with area jurisdictions and private businesses and residents to install outdoor AEDs. And Joel Vogel is here this evening to, um, present his request, um, to, for the city to, um, cover the cost of annual monitoring and maintenance, as well as every couple of years, pad and battery placement.
Rich told me it was going to be a fly on the wall and we kind of had this all taken care of. Have they seen the, what we sent to you in email format?
That spreadsheet that you shared?
Yes.
Yes, they have a copy of that in their packet.
So I guess I'm here more or less just to answer any questions. I guess I could give an update. We're very proud of the fact that we got fifteen of the outdoor AED units in St. Joe, they've been a real leader. The latest one went up out on, uh, Beeline Building, out in that particular area. And you, I think what we're asking for is, because when we first started this, it was kind of like the first one in the area, the council agreed to continue going forward as we got these out to pay for the electric and then the monitoring where the cell phones automatically call every day, check the status of the heat and whether it, the heat's on or the air, whatever needs being, and then the cell phone that calls the service and lets people know that's on, an ongoing monitoring and things of that nature. So what we did is we, in the yellow that we had sent, we put down what the ongoing was and what year it would be and we actually put this all the way out till uh, twenty twenty-five, so we had an idea with the units that were there. There are, there are, of the fifteen, there's only ten that we're considering, correct, Therese? That I'm, that we're showing right there?
So there, previously the city council had approved nine outdoor AEDs. Um, and tonight's request is for, um, an additional six.
So which would be the Bad Habit Brewing one, the Kleinfelter Park, the Beeline Marine one, the Coburn Store and St. Ben's. Um, actually, there's one other one that isn't on here that, uh, the St. Joe Rod and Gun Club picked this all up when, and when we worked with them, which is out at Kramer Lake right now.
Just, just for clarification, that's actually out of the city limits?
Correct.
So that's not included on the spreadsheet?
Yep. So what we're asking for is, is let's, I don't see that we're going to be putting any more in the city of St. Joe. We believe that the city of St. Joe is covered very well at this particular time, so this would be moving forward, uh, so the city knew what the budget for year after year after year. The one question that did come up that we, that originally we didn't have a solution for, just to make everybody know, is everybody's afraid that somebody's going to steal these units. And we have not had that problem. But we did have, uh, when we put one out at Kramer Lake, they were very concerned about it, so we put insurance on there, but Apple, in their wisdom, came up with something called an AirTag. I don't know if any of you heard about them, they're just little round tags. They're twenty-nine dollars a piece. You can get four for a hundred. And we have one on, uh, on the unit out at Kramer Lake, so if someone was to steal the AED out of the box and take off, anybody that has an Apple device with them, if they're at home and, let's say someone stole it and they had a son or daughter that was on their Apple computer at home, or any Apple thing, we would say, where's our unit? And go beep, 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 it's over here, it's in this house, this apartment, and we'd be able to just talk to law enforcement and say, hey, we know where our AED is, you want to go get it back for us? And it automatically tracks. Now, the crooks don't know this, so I hope they're not watching TV tonight. They'll find out that we've got this taken care of, but it is a solution we have if needed. That did not exist when we first started the program two years ago.
Questions? Yeah.
So on our agenda packet, Joel, there's another, and Therese, it also says one of these locations of the six is your private residence?
Yeah, the, the neighbors in the neighborhood all, um, chipped in and purchased these. None of them, no, no city money was used at all to purchase any of these, so they're all donations either from the Lions Clubs or, um, private, mid coal was what kicked in. Uh, Bad Habit Brewery actually took and named a beer after it called Save the Day and took a certain part of their sales, so they were able to put theirs out, so when we originally talked to the city, that was the idea, was if they didn't have any money to buy the initial, you know, five, six thousand dollars it took to put out, they would consider doing the ongoing maintenance. The electric and some of it is paid for by the city, my residence, I pay for it myself, um, and things, so Coburn's, you know, they pay for it, so there isn't, there isn't an electrical in there at all. It's just the ongoing maintenance.
And how long has the AED program been in place?
About eighteen months. I think
I mean, the original.
July of twenty twenty, July of, uh,
Two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And have, do we know, Chief, have these been utilized in a situation where we needed to access an AED to save somebody?
Not to my knowledge, Dwight.
Not, not for the safe stations.
Okay. It's not a lot of money, but I have trouble with the idea of annual maintenance for an AED that's at Coburn's or the College of St. Ben's or Bad Habit. I, I get the fact that if it's at Wobegon or Millstream Park or Kleinfelter, I would see where we would thank you for donating it and making it available. But the ongoing maintenance at some of these other entities that are, um, private, or in the case of St. Ben's, you know, they have their own operating budget, if they accept it, then I would see, why can't they maintain it? So that's from, that's how I feel in terms of a little bit of pushback on this.
I guess, you know, the background information is the city approved nine AEDs, correct? And these are an additional six that were placed prior, or after the nine that were approved, is that correct? Correct. Okay, um, so we already do the upkeep for those nine, is that correct? On the maintenance? And so what's being asked tonight is adding those six, which I know Councilman Kluusner had said, you know, it's, some of those are private businesses, so I agree with that as well as could those go back to the businesses? Are my questions.
Well, was there, was there a conversation before you went into these that, that came to the city first to say, okay, we're looking at this and would you accept taking this on if they say yes? Was that a conversation that happened? Cause that, then I could understand it. I knew, so I don't know what happened with the first sign and it looks like those are city areas, so that I would understand. Um, but that, I, again, I love it that they're out there, I love it that we have them. Um, but that would be mine is, eh, did you bring the city to the table before you went to these companies and say, yep, this city is going to say yes to taking care of the maintenance, would you be interested in, in housing it? That's kind of how I understand, you know, so that did not happen?
Kelly, we made no promises to the businesses that were there. They, they, they all agreed that
Okay.
like, like the city, that this is a, a good idea to have available. What, what we worked with the city on, not only the city of St. Joe, but all the other cities, is we worked strategically with the partners and said, where should we have them placed? Now, the city doesn't have facilities all the way on the west end of town where I live or where, or where, um, you have Beeline Marine and things, uh, out there. They do have, they, there are, there is one out there where, where Coburn's is, but a lot of people aren't that familiar with it. So the, the reality is, when in fact someone does go into sudden cardiac arrest, you have a limited amount of time there and they, you panic. And if you go to where you know where they are, it, it really helps and, and, and things, so um, I mean, I'm thankful to the fire department this year for, and the fire counselors that were just mailed out last week that, um, I think it's the month of April's got a photograph of where all the outdoor
That's great.
AEDs are located in, in St. Joe. And if you look at that map, they're placed out strategically. I see what you're saying, whether a business would, would pay for it or not. In, in regards to Coburn's, Chris Coburn was very gracious. He came to us and says, tell you what, you can put one on any one of my stores and I'll take care of the, the, the electric and, and the, the installation costs and things like that, so that was a step up. I don't know if anybody in this room knew that there was an AED in the inside of Coburn's and where it was located. So now you walk in the front door and you're able to see it. Now, whether the city pays for it or not, that's up to you guys. I'm, we're here saying, you know what, you guys, this has been a good partnership. I'd hate three hundred and ninety-five dollars a buck a day to, uh, influence that. We'd say, no, we're not going to do that, or whatever, on, on the, on the ongoing monitoring. And the pads are only ever, if, every two years and the batteries are every four years, so. It's not a large amount of money for, for what's presented, but Kevin, I, I understand your positioning, because if you're going to do it for us, who else are you going to do it for? It was a little nilly willy when we first got this going because Judy was just leaving and there was, you know, some, some things that went back and forth. I mean, uh, a lot of it was paid for originally by, uh, first three were paid for by Audrey Twit. The city didn't even pay for them, so there's, there's been a lot of, this has been a, a city effort that everybody's kind of got their arms around. But I would say this, I, I'd like you to consider that and say, you know what, we're going to do these, these five. And basically, we're not going to be, we're done. We've got, we've got St. Joe covered. We, we don't plan on doing this. We're actually headed out west and getting other cities and towns that are coming on board to catch up with what you guys have done.
Joel, I think what you've done is phenomenal and you primed the pump by getting them into public places that the city has agreed to maintain and you've been able to take that mission forward to private entities and to the College of St. Ben's with the same mission. And I would think knowing that their, uh, community involvement and their care for, uh, the city of St. Joseph and its residents, that they wouldn't have, whether it's Beeline or the College or Coburn's, wouldn't have any issues with maintaining the, the AEDs, you know, on a every-two-year basis.
My question would be then, is finances now, yes, it's three seventy-five per, so
Three ninety-five.
Yeah, per unit, so we're looking at approximately twenty-five hundred for what we're doing right now, right? And then is it an added cost for these extra five, four, six, sorry?
It's about the twenty-four, twenty-five hundred to add the six, add it to the budget.
Okay, so all together then, for all of them, the fifteen, correct? We have fifteen altogether then, including altogether?
Um, Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's how many we would, if, if you approve the six, then it would be a total of fifteen.
Cost then would be for the fifteen?
About six thousand. It's close to six thousand.
Okay. Just wanted to double check.
So in, in doing my math, we already do or pay for the nine currently
Correct.
at thirty-three seventy-five a year, and then every two years it's fifty-five thirty. Right? Cause every two years it goes up. And so for the ones, for the other five or the six that were on here, you're talking another thirty-eight hundred oh seven. But for a business, it'd be three hundred and ninety dollars a year and six hundred and fifteen every, every other year. Is kind of how I did the math out there. And again, I, I kind of go back to what Councilman Kluusner said, is I don't see why St. Ben's wouldn't want to do that or another business as well. Cause, I mean, we're already accepting the nine, which is great, and again, it's, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but it's just kind of where I'm at, trying to look at math wise.
There is the one in Kleinfelter Park that was donated. Um, that was not, um, part of the original nine. Since that's in our park, that might be a different consideration, since there's not really a business attached to it.
That might be, how did it end up in Kleinfelter Park with us not accepting it as a donation?
It was donated by the Mark Zimmer Foundation.
I get it, it's residing in our park.
Yeah, I don't know how that happened.
That's a staff thing, isn't it?
We, we were not aware of it.
Well, wait, it's not in Kleinfelter Park.
Where is it at then?
The residence next door to Kleinfelter Park.
So it's not Kleinfelter Park, it's another residence.
In answer, in answer to your question, as I think about where that one's located, the, the lady there is paying for the electric and the, the family is, is there and we didn't have power there, so we've, we've had people
So it's not, it's donated, but it's not, it's next to Kleinfelter Park.
It's right next to
Yeah, I know where it is. It's not in, as you enter it. So again, it's another private residence, not Kleinfelter Park. So, again, it's another private residence, not Kleinfelter, not public.
Okay, within the new one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, my inclination is to not, not move forward with this request.
Would you even consider, would you consider doing the one that's, cause there was some residence set with the other residence that's already done, and decline then the Bad Habit and Beeline, Coburn's, and Saint Ben's, at least?
No, I would decline them all.
I would say unless it's moved into Kleinfelter Park, that would be my only thought, instead of the residence, and it's actually in the park, that would be a different story, because now it's in the city, or the city park, instead of a private residence. I guess that, that would be my only thought to it. I, I don't feel we should have to, as a city, pay for it on a private residence. So, I would, yeah.
It really goes back to presentation about public support on private property, and what would they were presented at the time of putting these devices up.
Yeah, I said, there's, there was no, there were no promises made, we, we talked about what the city had done previously, we're very careful about what we say moving forward, so they, they understand. As a matter of fact, when the city started this, the, the included, a for, a two-year monitoring program was included, now that's changed where it's a one-year monitoring program. We had, we also had a grant that was available at the time, where if they put it outside, they got the AED free, that grant has gone away, so now, when a business purchases or an individual, or whatever neighborhoods, they, they end up, um, knowing that, that, that's ongoing maintenance and things, uh, that goes forward.
So my motion is to not, uh, deny the request, to not consider. Motion and second to not consider the request. Further questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye, opposed? Very good, thank you all, thank you, Joel.
One other comment, there's still training that was in the original agreement, that with every one of these that we put out, that we give free hands-on training. And I'd like the city to consider, like, taking a Saturday, every, like, the second Saturday, and maybe opening up the fire hall or someplace else, where you could s- say to the residents of Saint Joe, come here, and, if you want, and register and do that. And if we could coordinate that, we could definitely, cause a lot of people know it, but they don't know everything else.
We did, and the, and the Lions participated in one of them as well, why don't you work with staff on doing something like that?
Yeah, we actually have one scheduled on the calendar, already, in December. And then we also had a staff one that we had completed early recently.
Maybe do another one in the spring again.
Absolutely.
Very good, thanks, Joel.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, oh, lost my place again. Item seven, Kelly, this looks like you. Is it seven?
No.
Oh, River's Bend, sorry, I'm one ahead, sorry. Sorry, man. I was reading seven, looking at the mic, sorry. I very, I apologize, sorry.
Kayla, can we switch, thank you. So, Mayor and Council, for your consideration this evening, is a proposal entitled River's Bend Four. So what this proposal is, is a developer, CLC Partners, is proposing to preliminary and final plat, twenty-eight lots, which is eleven-plus acres. The intent is to facilitate townhome development under our, our four zoning standards. So, project is located northeast of Lanigan Way, right off College Avenue. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing at their regular meeting on October eleventh, and held a special meeting on October twenty-fifth. The, we did get numerous comments at the October eleventh meeting, uh, we did not receive any additional comments at the October twenty-fifth meeting. So the Planning Commission did recommend approval, October twenty-fifth. The utilities for this project will be looped from the county road over to Lanigan Way. And again, this is to facilitate the development for townhomes under our, our four zoning standards, which allows two to six units an acre. This is just the plat, which is in your packet.
Hey, hey Nate, can I jump in?
Yeah, definitely.
Some of the, you said you had some complaints, like, about traffic type of housing, vegetation, safety. Was there anything specifically about those complaints that rose a flag?
So, yeah.
To it?
Yeah, so, uh, one of the concerns, uh, related to drainage, and that was just, um, to ensh- you know, is a general comment meant to, um, ensure that the drainage from this development would not cause a, a negative reaction to the adjacent properties. Um, so, we did answer that and some of the other ones, of course, the, uh, cu- the county owns the, the road right there, so, um, we're limited in what we can, can do there. But part of that, though, uh, we are requiring a crosswalk to be installed. Uh, this development will have sidewalks on the south side of the cul-de-sac, and then.
Is that connecting with the school?
Mm-hmm, yes, correct. So, part of the final plat includes the developers' agreement, we will ensure that the county and the engineer comments are addressed. Um, the different fees associated with this project are your standard sewer and water trunk fees, your park dedication fees, your stormwater fees, and then other items like sack and whack are payable at the time of the permit. So what we're requesting this evening is a motion on the preliminary plat resolution, twenty-twenty-one zero-six-five, and also on the final plat resolution. The final plat resolution, uh, does include the language for the developers' agreement, making sure that all items are adhered to in that developers' agreement. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, should the council have any.
Move on to preliminary plat resolution, twenty-twenty-one sixty-five. Motion and second on preliminary plat resolution, twenty-twenty-one sixty-five, questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I can move to motion, the second recommendation approval of twenty-twenty-one zero-six-six, to approve the final plat in the development agreement, developers' agreement, second?
Motion and second, final plat resolution, twenty-one oh-six-six, with the developers' agreement, any other concerns or questions? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, we're, we're moved, thanks, guys. Okay, Kelly, now you're up, okay?
Now I push away from the table.
Yep.
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna see a demonstration, is what I wanna see here.
Sure, do you wanna be one of my students?
No, 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 John does. John wants to be one of your students.
I would love to do, you guys, that would be fun.
So this is just, uh, approval to come in and teach some small kids classes.
Well, I think it's the, the, because of the fee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it?
Oh, sorry.
So, so there is the, um, in this case, it kinda trips the conflicts of interest statute.
Yep.
Um, since the, um, Kelly would be teaching the class, collecting a fee to pay for the equipment that's on there, um, that she uses for the class, um, it's a nominal fee, she's not gaining, like, a huge financial interest in doing this, but, um, to be safe, I wanted it to run past council, um, for the city's protection, also for Kelly's protection, and, and like I said, what trips it up is the conflicts of interest statute, um, where there is a possible, um, financial benefit for the services that she's providing, even though it's minimal, it's still a financial benefit, it doesn't talk about dollar amount, so.
Haven't we, have we got around this before by, uh, fees going direct to the city versus the instructor?
We're, we would still, we still would pay the instructors to the class. You know, in this case, it's really buying the equipment to do the class, to host the class.
Just, I thought there was some, I thought this had happened before, and we, we got around it by going to the city for registrations and all those other fees, and it went into a fund or something like that, but I, I, I can't recall exactly.
Are there, are there any, are there any fee, or is there any money set aside, like, in recreations where the city could buy the actual stuff, and it, it just retains the equipment?
Um, there could, but at the same time, even if she's doing an in-kind donation of her time to, to do the class, it still would take a council action to accept that. I know it's minor and it's small, but just for everybody's protection,
Sure.
I think it's, it's best just to take action on it.
Right, and so if we take action tonight, and it's unanimously voted, then?
Right, and Kelly would abstain, so.
Okay.
So when it says unanimously?
By those present.
Got it.
By, by those present.
That was my next question.
Is, uh, so Kelly, were you teaching them here, or where?
I would be teaching them, I would be teaching them here.
Okay. So there's, again, that's just free rental, right? There's just, we reserve the space and that's it, okay, good.
It would still be run under our rec director, under the recreational program, so.
Yeah, I talked around it.
So it's not her partic- her personal business or anything, it's through the rec.
Yep. Questions?
Yeah, I, I move to approve Councilmember Kelly to teach and, teach the class and charge to cover the cost of the equipment materials. Second?
Motion and second, uh, approving the, Kelly to teach this class, charge it whatever cost is necessary and, and keep it moving. We should film this, though, shouldn't we?
Sure.
Motion is, motion and second, move. Motion and second, moving forward with the classes for Kelly, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, Kelly, for volunteering.
Do you have one abstain as well?
Yeah, oh, sorry, all those, uh, and abstentions.
I abstain.
Yeah, sorry.
I abstain.
Pros, negatives, abstentions, sorry, thank you. Uh, what are you, on number nine now? Oh, I gotta get that better.
Next is the fee schedule.
Yeah, fee schedule, sorry, Lori.
Um, I put the draft fee schedule in, um, departments had looked through it, um, with their suggestions. Um, changes are highlighted in, in yellow. Um, I do intend on having more discussion with the council at the workshop, when we kinda do all, the whole budget and the fees, everything all together, um, come up here in the, next week, I think, is the workshop. Anyways, I wanted to get it in front of you for a chance to look at it, if you had questions or concerns, we can address them. Um, and also, tonight would be the night that we would call for the public hearing of the fee schedule, and we try to do it the same night we do Truth and Taxation, which is December sixth. Again, it all kinda encompasses part of the budget.
Sure.
I guess, I just have one question, cause we'll see what next Tuesday brings, I might be there, I might not. With a new child on the way, we'll see. Um, I see for the license, yeah, maybe. The license and the permit, I know getting rid of the dog tags, things like that, I know it, eh, from talking with members, it's not a, a huge nominal fee, but is there any other concerns with getting rid of that license? I guess with any other members?
I know, um, Kayla did some research with some area cities too on that, and.
You did that last year, if I remember it, we had somebody ask about that, I'm sure of it.
To get rid of them?
Yes, some cities were getting rid of licensing dogs altogether.
Sartell recently did, um, Albany as well. They just, um, so when licensing was implemented, it was to get a current rabies vaccination, right? And now, people that have their dogs usually have it chipped, or have a rabies tag, something like that to identify the dog. Um, and really, with the amount of staff time it takes to issue the tags, um, bring the animals to the humane society, we're not covering our costs with that.
Oh, yeah. That's all you needed to say.
On that note, are we still, are they still registering if they're foster home for, for pets? They're doing for dogs and stuff, cause that can really build up in a home in the neighborhoods too. So does that go away with that then, or?
So there still would be the limit of two dogs per household.
Even if they're a foster?
Um, from my understanding, yes.
But Kayla, um, can you clarify, do, do, would you need a kennel permit?
Correct.
If you have, if you do fostering?
Correct, which would need.
So that could be an option.
Yeah, anything over two, um, would have to come in for the council for approval.
So you're looking for what, just look it over until?
You had questions, but we do need to call for the public hearing.
I have questions.
Oh, very good, go, Kev.
Um, not so much about the fees, but just the, um, how the system works. So, under equipment rate, it says backhoe, a hundred and forty-five dollars an hour. Does that mean a resident could rent the city backhoe for a hundred and forty an hour?
No. What is, so what does that mean? So, let's, let's, I'll give you an example, uh, the fire chief has a fire at farm, it's a hay, a barn fire, and we have to bring our backhoe out there to pull hay apart or something, that's, that's our equipment fee.
So we're gonna assess that account?
Right.
Okay.
Is that the reason why you took away the snow removal then, too? I mean.
That's really covered under the equipment and labor cost, so we didn't really remove the fee, but we're just not spelling it out separately, cause we could probably find twenty thousand things that we could put on there separately, so it's just covered under labor, labor and equipment.
So under labor and equipment, like, if there's a firefighter at twenty dollars an hour, how would that get invoiced? What would be the scenario where we would invoice an entity, whether our own account or a residence for firefighter labor? Again, it's just trying to understand how the system works.
For a fire in the fire district, we do not charge this out unless there's proof of a negligence situation. Um, our fire department often gets res- uh, uh, call out on I ninety-four for a car fire, usually not, uh, resident of the fire district, we would bill that out. Uh, we, we do have a few residents that ask for a swimming pool fu- fill, they pay for the truck, the labor, and the water.
Good, thanks.
Other questions about the fees? So my motion is to call for the public hearing of proposed fee schedule on December sixth with the, uh, Truth and Taxation.
I'll second.
Motion and second, public hearing of proposed fees on December sixth. Other questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye, opposed? Motion does carry, thank you, Lori. Uh, I don't know which one we're on. Ten, item ten.
Yeah, so at your last meeting, um, you had, had agreed to review and score the proposals for Construction Manager. Uh, the council also held a joint meeting with the Community Center Committee on November second to hear presentations for the fundraising consultant. Um, and, um, those are listed in their staff report, uh, the one that rated the highest is Hartzok Fundraising Consultant Worldwide. So I'm asking this evening for direction on that, if you wanna go with, with, um, moving forward, um, with that company. Um, the, uh, you had received the A Proposals for Construction Manager Services, and we want to narrow that down to a shortlist, so your top three or four. Um, I had suggested at your last meeting that, um, a couple of council members, um, join us in our staff meeting, so it'd be Lori and I, um, along with, uh, Greg Jake with the YMCA, and then HMA, um, to take a look at how you all pr- scored the proposals, um, and create that shortlist of the top three or four to present to you.
Well, we already have the top four, correct?
You do, we, we, we don't, so you, you score it on, but we, the staff is gonna be meeting with Greg and HMA to look at how those were scored, and then we'll be able to,
Narrow it down.
Narrow it down, with their input as well.
Oh, so you're, so they're still gonna be able to look at all of them then, is that what you're saying?
Yes, so they would look at the scoring, they would still look at how it was scored, absolutely.
Okay.
But, you know, Greg would also take a look at how he scored, uh, the proposals as well.
Okay.
So, asking for input and direction on tonight on two items.
Yeah, what do you need for the, again, I wasn't here for the fundraiser stuff, but what do you need, of just the, uh, uh, d- uh, direction to go forward with developing a contract of some sort?
Yeah, if you're, if you're comfortable.
I mean, I, I didn't, I'm kinda relying on you guys.
I mean, we were there, I, you know, I'll speak for myself, but I, I think Hartzok is the direction, at least personally, I would like to go from what we heard of all of the ones. So personally, that's, that's the direction I would like to go. I don't know about you or Kevin or Kelly, but.
No, I concur with that.
I also agree.
So do we, do we need to make a motion or move a motion to go forward with Hartzok? So I'll, I'll, I'll make a, or I'll move to go with Hartzok Fundraising Consultant Worldwide.
I second that.
Motion and second to move forward with Hartzok Fundraising Consultant Worldwide, yeah, Kev.
Therese, do we have any leeway with the fee that they proposed?
So I would bring forth a contract for review that would include that, more clarification on their fees.
So maybe contingent.
So we're not locking into a dollar number, we're just locking into getting into a contract with them?
Correct.
Maybe contingent upon.
Cause you'll need to formally approve a contract.
Okay.
Motion, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
It was motion and second, more questions or concerns? Okay, motion and second on fundraising, moving forward, developing contract with Hartzok, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, uh, Construction Manager.
So how, again, how many people did rank the eight?
I received three, three from council members, so, so waiting on two, so we would include, still need to. three, three from council members. So, so waiting on two. So we would include, still need to include all the council members. So I would take those.
Yep.
How you scored them and staff, Lori and I would be meeting with HMA and the YMCA and then I would ask.
So between the five and then your two, so seven, and then narrow it down three to four?
Yes, correct.
With two members of council.
Yes.
Okay.
And we want to get this, since we've got the fundraiser on the, on the hook here, we really want to start moving on this. And so you would probably set this up next week, correct?
Yeah, possibly even this week, if possible.
And so it was brought to the table that, um, Kevin and Mayor Rick would be the two, which I would be fine with.
And I know I wasn't here last time and I'd be fine with that because then we would also still be on the community center.
Correct.
Board and I'm okay with that, I guess. I didn't know how Bob sat last week or what he thought either, two weeks ago, but.
Where is Bob?
But I, I mean, I'm fine with that too. So I say, I, I, I say we move forward with having Councilman Klusner and Mayor Rick and then.
Keep the wheels turning, yeah.
Then that will motivate me to get my score sheet in.
There you go.
Look at that.
I'm one of the two.
Do we need a motion or just we're good with that? We have consensus.
She said fine.
Do you need, do you need a move or you're good with that?
If we have consensus, we're good.
You have consensus, you are fine.
Okay.
All right, uh, department reports. Therese, do you like to start?
Yeah, did, uh, before that, just, um, engineer reports is on there. I don't know if Frank has anything.
There is?
That's department, that's department reports, isn't it?
I don't have a letter.
I guess just maybe an update for the council on our twenty twenty-one improvements. We're, we're moving into, uh, winter carryover mode now, so, um, you might see a little bit of miscellaneous cleanup work, uh, by the contractor. But for the most, as weather would permit, but for the most part, we're in, uh, winter carryover mode until next spring. So, uh, our streets that were, were requiring the first, uh, layer of, of bituminous have been paved, uh, as of last week. We finally worked through some schedule bumps and equipment breakdowns, but, uh, the contractor got it done just in time. So, uh, for the most part, you'll see suspension of the work until, uh, spring warm time next, next season. So.
Excellent. Thank you, Andy. Okay, now Therese, can we start? Because it's number twelve now.
So just, uh, just a few highlights. The community center committee, they met a couple of times this last month and they discussed space, um, in the new community center amenities, things of that nature. And then we're also planning for public outreach in January, so more to come. Um, Lori and I, uh, have been reviewing health insurance plans, um, and so, uh, open enrollment for employees is now underway. Uh, we closed on the sale of the old fire, our village hall and fire hall, um, last week. Uh, we conducted the summer, in seven interviews, um, for police officer position. Upcoming meetings, we have an EDA meeting tomorrow. Our fire board meeting is November twenty-second, so next week. And then, um, just a reminder, we have our council work session next week on the twenty-third at five thirty.
Questions? Anyone for Therese? Thank you, Therese. Nate?
Yeah, just some highlights. The EDA met on November fourth to do a work session. Couple priorities were de- uh, decided. Uh, redevelopment of the downtown area is one. Another one is, uh, attraction of a hotel within the downtown area. Um, so we'll have more discussions on, on those things, uh, tomorrow and in incoming meetings for the EDA. The planning commission met October twenty-fifth, which was a special meeting to conduct the, uh, second hearing for Rivers Bend Four. We did cancel the November eighth meeting. East Park, if you recall, we did submit regional designation for that. We did get our response back. Unfortunately, we did fall short for that regional designation, but not all hope is lost. There are some terrific grants that we can go for that I think are very applicable for that project. Uh, one of them being a DNR outdoor rec grant. So more to come on that. And then the.
Nate, where did we fail? What didn't come up to speed?
Yeah, so one of their big factors that, a couple of big factors, we're in a very reg- uh, competitive regional area. Um, so the quarry, Kramer Lake, uh, those facilities, since they're so close by East Park, um, they, they don't want to concentrate a high amount of regional facilities in one area. Um, so the competitive region is one. Um, the second other reason is they look at minimum acreage. So, uh, typically a regional park from their designation is a hundred acres. We're just south of that. Um, so that was another comment that they had. Uh, they did love the canoe, the potential canoe access. Um, so with other grant opportunities that are out there, um, that would probably be one that definitely should get, uh, pursued, that the canoe access or trails or things of that nature. Um, but yeah, I can, I can share the, the full scorecard with anyone if they would like to see that. And then the only other thing that I have is, uh, shop small crawl. Just a shout out for that, November twenty-seventh. So, um, put it on everyone's radar. It's gonna be, the CBB has done a terrific job with that and a lot of fun things will, um, occur that day. So, yeah, that's all I have. Any questions?
Did, uh, you receive a monitoring report from DEED, Small Cities Development Grant Program?
Yes, I did. And I, I can definitely share that. So Saint Joseph is, um, oh gosh, what is it? I think we had at least six first time homeowner loans for that and we've exceeded our percentage. We're like a thousand percent higher than where we are supposed to be. So it's a great program that's been tapped into, um, very well. So we'll actually anticipate, um, a resolution coming to council in December to, uh, renew that program for twenty twenty-two. Um, because it's been a great success, so.
I was just gonna say, you should share that with the counselors. I got a copy of it. You guys, I assume, did not, right?
We did not.
Okay.
I got a copy of it because it, um, connected to DEED, but yeah, you should share that with them.
Perfect. I'll do that. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, Nate. Lori?
Uh, real quick, so I met, um, with the area cities for the sewer, um, with the city of Saint Cloud reviewing their budget and their fees. Um, their budget, they're proposing about a four to five percent, um, increase in the sewer usage. They do have a couple of maintenance things that, um, came up due to really the corrosive nature of the wastewater treatment system. Um, so they have a couple of things that they need to do. Um, been working on, you know, fine tuning the budget, fee schedule, uh, utility bills and the newsletter went out last week. So probably everybody's received it by now. Um, as Therese said, her and I had been working on open enrollment. So we're just finishing, or wrapping that up. Um, I did set up the new broker, um, and we actually reviewed some unis that I think we're gonna, and look at investing in one of them, um, this week. So that's going well. Um, I've been involved in the community center capital campaign piece of it, um, reviewing, scoring also the construction, uh, manager. I've had, um, Vicky and Kim are doing some training, um, Excel, Banyan, some different things. They're both new employees. So they, um, trying to get used to some of our systems. Then also, um, and maybe, um, Ryan will talk about this a little bit, but Vicky, Therese, myself and the Public Works Utility folks met to kind of look over, um, doing cellular meter reads and incorporating that into the, the budget and the thesis schedule, so. Um, upcoming, I'm, I have a webinar for the American Rescue Plan money. I think it's actually more on the reporting side of it. Um, we are hoping to come forward with, uh, a proposal next week at your workshop for spending of that ARPA money. And then, um, I also am sitting in on the Minnesota Government Finance Officer presentation this week. And it's, it's, um, kind of talking about workforce, DEED, where the world is today and, um, some ideas on how to move forward.
Yeah, Kevin.
So Lori, the, um, uh, Saint Cloud Area Water and Sewer, the budget of four to five percent increase. We, you have incorporated that into this upcoming budget?
I have. So it's incorporated into the fees basically and.
Thank you.
They, they've been, um, they're pretty open now to what's coming up too on projects. They thought the next big ex- expansion was going to be in about twenty thirty. I think we might be able to buy an extra year or two on that based on where current use is in the, the plant. And so they are asking the area cities to start working on, um, what their twenty fifty capacity needs are. Um, so I did share that with the, the engineer and Public Works that we, we have ours figured out through twenty thirty-five. Um, that next expansion will, um, try to get capacity through twenty fifty for the area, so.
Any other questions for Lori? Very good. Ryan?
Um, so well seven, uh, which is Odette Water Treatment Plant Two, uh, we had that well revamped back in September-ish with, uh, trout wells. We're just having some issues with that. The pump that was designed, that got put in that well, um, is, is tripping out our motor, our electric motor. So we started doing some investigating with the help of SCH, um, and, and our, basically our wells are doing better than we anticipated. So there's, there's not as much head losses as anticipated, so. Um, so we did, we did some testing on our, on our motors and bottom line is we're looking at designing a, a pump that, that works with the efficiency of the electric motors. So, uh, more to follow on that. Um, ordering street salt, we got that in. Uh, still kind of transitioning from, uh, summer maintenance to, to, uh, server, servicing winter equipment. Dog park lighting, I signed the, uh, work order with that with Excel, so hopefully we'll see lighting out there within the next two to four weeks. Um, working on, uh, getting some warming house attendance for the open ice. Like I've got about three individuals right now. Um, I, I need to get their applications, but, uh, pretty solid three individuals, so. Uh, and as far as winter seasonal help, we're gonna bring back Terry Sulzer. And then I had, um, uh, Jake from the fire department, Richter, Jake Richter showed interest in that, so I'll be reaching back out to him. Um, as far as the cellular reads go for the meters, so we met with Badger, um, who is our current provider for meters throughout the city. Um, Badger offers a cellular, cellular reading system. Um, it, it, there's, there's a fee of six hundred dollars a year for, for the cloud to store all of that data. Um, the, the meters would update every fifteen minutes. Um, along with that for a fee, a small fee, um, uh, the end user, um, can, can see their meter reads. So, and along with, um, lose my train of thought. Um, so if they have high water, high water usage and stuff like that, it'll ping them. So, uh, but more to follow on that during the workshop. As far as the staff goes, um, doing a lot of storm pond, uh, maintenance. We're doing a lot of flushing right now. Lot of leaf litter out there, um, street sweeping. We're hoping to get back at that this week. Um, park maintenance, um, dog park, we're gonna have to wait until it frees up to get some chips in there. I do have quite a few loads of chips on hand. Um, upcoming meetings, events, park board meeting on the twenty-second, uh, council work session on the twenty-third and then safety training on the first of December. Depending, any questions?
Just, I'm just kind of curious, how do you design a new pump? I, I mean, are you building one from scratch or?
Can I help?
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm looking at Ryan, but I know he's not gonna answer.
What, when, uh, any type of pump or in this case a well pump is designed, there's typically a range of operating conditions, uh, that pumps operate. And ideally you pick a pump, uh, parameters of a pump and it operates in, for lack of a better description, a sweet spot. But with wells, uh, depending on how the wells perform, uh, those operating conditions can, can vary. Uh, for example, wells might start losing their capacity or the, you know, the wa- the drawdown on a well, um, changes the pumping levels. And so that sweet spot can move. And in the case of, of well seven, but well, what, what, uh, Ryan was saying is the wells are doing better. The wells were designed to pump seven hundred fifty gallons per minute. They're actually pumping about more than a thousand. It's because the well and the water supply has maintained, uh, well, uh, I use a different word, has been operating in a good condition for all these years, that the drawdown in the well is not very significant. So what it means is when I talk about this sweet spot and this range of operating conditions, the pumps are operating and pumping more water than they originally designed to, but conversely, when, when pumps do that, they're not as efficient. So what, what, uh, the design that Ryan's referring to is picking a pump that operates more in the sweet spot that we're still seeing today in twenty twenty-one versus twenty, two thousand and five. And when you get it in that sweet spot, it won't cause some of the electrical issues that staff are experiencing where it's tripping out. Because it's, if you can see, if the mic's at the center of the sweet spot right now, it's operating towards the end, uh, or, or edge. And we want to keep that sweet spot in the middle. So it's selecting a different pump so that he can still see a thousand gallons per minute because the wells have been producing that. Uh, but the pump was originally designed to only pump seven hundred fifty gallons per minute.
How many wells do we have?
We have six wells, uh, three in this field.
Why does it say number seven?
So.
We're on the seventh one.
Cut it out.
So, so even though you might abandon a well, uh, you keep numbering them. You don't go back and call. If you, if you had number well, well number one.
Okay, we got six. This is number seven.
Yes.
And does Trout have any responsibility for this or is just the luck of the draw that this is a great well and it's got so much water on it?
That's what we're working through in terms of when they rehab the pump, uh, at least in our opinion. Um, they didn't evaluate what the current operating conditions are. They looked at what the original design was back in two thousand and five and they matched those parameters, but technically the well, uh, is operating differently than it did originally, so.
Ryan, how often does it trip? Once a day, once an hour, when it trips?
Once an hour.
And when it trips, it's not pumping?
Correct. And, and we're, we're fine, you know, we're not in any trouble. We just, we're, we're, we actually, we're, we're not, we're not. We don't have that well in service. We, we turn it on once a day just to, just to get water flow through the.
To wait till it trips?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
Oh, good. I like that. I, no, it's a great education. So Ryan, I got a question from a resident. Uh, maybe a week or two ago, there was a truck and three guys digging around all these light poles.
Yeah, I got a few questions about that too. I haven't reached out to Excel. I don't know what they were doing.
I, like almost every light pole.
Every one.
They were digging a little hole. I don't know what they're looking for and then they'd fill it back up and move to the next one.
Yeah.
It's just maintaining a power pole. I ran into one of these guys. They're contracted by Excel.
Yeah.
They're out of Louisiana and they were in here for a period of time to, uh.
Make it stronger?
Well, it's just maintenance on the wooden poles. And then they pound one of their things in there. This has been maintained. They had nothing to do with Ryan.
Well, kind of. It's utility poles in our city and.
But it must be Excel's pole, right?
Uh, anyway, I was curious because I didn't know either and then there were, I couldn't find them and then they were four blocks away doing it again. I'm going, gee, those guys prove pretty fast. But I didn't know what they were doing, so okay. I did, thank you. Hey, good job, Kev. Good job, man.
I keep an eye on the city.
Yeah. Watch a dog, baby. Woo! Any other questions? Any questions for Ryan?
Deputize him.
Let's not go down that alley yet. Dwight, what do you got for us?
We're only gonna give them authority over power poles though.
Start small.
Uh, yeah, so I'm just gonna kind of wrap my summary up out of the whole, um, report here, kind of jump around. But obviously by the numbers I've given you, our numbers were up from October of this year. I gave you what it was in two thousand and twenty for October and by comparison before COVID, what it was at. So there doesn't seem to be much correlation between COVID, non-COVID. We're just on a continuum heading in upward direction. We had four hundred and sixteen ICE yards this last month and I'm sure Jeff's reports obviously are gonna show the same thing. It's just calls for public service are constantly going up. Where I'm gonna jump to with staff is, is I know people are gonna ask, well, where are we at now that we've had Candy hired? So from what I understand and how Mary's kind of training Candy in is if you can think about what our code system is as far as a school bus stop or dog at large to suspicious smell, suspicious activity, all of these calls all have to be entered a certain way. Some have evidence. dog at large to suspicious smell, suspicious activity, all of these calls all have to be entered a certain way. Some have evidence, some have photos, some have statements. And so what Mary's done is she's trying to get us caught up for twenty twenty-one. So we have to date what we have, what our calls were all at, so we can get caught back up. Um, so for example, she can run a, a report in the system that says, give me all of our school bus stop arm violations. There might be one in, in April. Gotta be careful not to say summer month. Um, but there might be one in February or something along that lines or do all the suspicious smells. Whereas when Mary was entering ICRs, she might just take the month of February and just go right on down the line, so February's complete. So my response would be is, is I can't give you where we're at to date as far as our totals go for each one until she gets the whole year as a whole. Because some ICRs, it might be a domestic assault or something more severe, takes a lot more energy for her to input and stuff like that. So hopefully once she has a whole year in or this whole two thousand and twenty-one caught up, she'll have hit just about every scenario we can throw at her. But she's doing very good. Probably the one thing that we anticipated, but kind of didn't anticipate is how busy the front window would get when there's somebody sitting there again, because I think a lot of people were walking by, may have had a police question and just chose not to ask it. Or just moved on to city hall, which hopefully has taken some pressure off of Vicky as well. But there's def- uh, Candy is definitely getting her opportunity to, um, be the ambassador for the police department on her side, so. So yeah, um, and then also in my report, I had put down where we were at, um, as of twenty twenty. We ended the year, the most since I've been here in two thousand and two, at thirty-eight twenty-six for ICRs. I just checked with Sergeant Major Maygard right now tonight and we're at thirty-eight eighty-six as of right now. So we're about fifty ICRs beyond where we ended last year. And we still have six weeks to go. So. So other than that, um, unless somebody has any questions, that's kind of a general overall where we're at. We're just, we're not seeming abnormally different. We're just busier, so.
Any questions for Dwight today?
Otherwise I'll yield the rest of my time to Jeff.
Thanks. Jeff, what you got for us?
Oh, not a lot. Um, just kind of updated where we're at, up to date as of eleven ten, we're at four hundred and seventy calls. As of right now, we're at four eighty-two. Last year we were at five ten for the year. So going piggyback on Dwight. It's, keeps going up and I don't see it, um, ever declining for services that we're gonna provide. Continually working with Mayo and Stearns County Dispatch. Our next meeting is December sixth about the calls, um, where we may not be needed or a different way of handling them to try to cut down our call volume. Bumper tanker that we ordered, uh, the committee went down October twenty-seventh for a pre-con meeting. Everything is looking good. Everything's ordered. So potentially we're still looking at the thirteen months from signing date. We added three new members last Tuesday, so brings us up to twenty-eight active members. Our grass rig replacement, um, will be going to the fire board for some more approval coming up next week. Our committee has been working on different ways or different options of how we want to address it or how we want to get it built. And Assistant Chief myself attended the Fire Chiefs Conference up in Duluth in October. That's about all I got. Questions?
Anyone? Very good. Thanks, Jeff.
Before, if you don't mind, Mayor Rick, I just wanted to be able to, um, comment on our staff and, you know, some things that I have been, um, hearing and things like that. I just want to say thank you for your service. Um, some cities don't have what we have and I absolutely, um, appreciate the education and the experience that you guys bring to the table, each and every one of you, um, especially for me, being, heading, finishing off almost a year here. I'm just so appreciative that I have, um, we have you, um, backing us and being able to be there for us for the education that you have. So thank you so very much to each and every one of you.
Uh, mayor's reports. So I sat down with CSBSU Senate Community Relations members and they have some concerns over safety, which I don't think is unusual based on what's going on at the campus right now. But they also talked about lighting and some of the other things that we should probably sit down and talk about. I'm, again, I don't know if there's anything going on, but at least have that discussion. We're told we can use the record to publish city news if we want to. Um, that's kind of an ongoing thing. I've published stuff in the record before. And there, we're setting, I'm setting up a town hall with students, uh, sometime in the new year. Um, I was asked by somebody, and this might have been a couple of weeks ago, about what do we, what do we put on the city billboard, like advertisements and stuff? And so I, I don't know if we have a policy. Ask Kayla to look to see if we have a policy and if not, bring something back to us on if we do or don't do advertisements. I don't know if we used to or we did or anything and I don't.
We don't have a policy on it currently.
Yeah, so I want to make sure it's clear of what we can and can't put out there. If, you know, you have a garage sale, it doesn't go on there or something, but we, that kind of came to light by somebody. So I asked her to look at it and come back, bring something back to the council. Uh, this week I'm attending a Coalition of Great Minnesota Cities Fall Conference. It's in Wilmer. And one of the, in addition to meeting all the gubernatorial candidates, um, we're gonna be, we're gonna be, uh, addressing the CGMC's response to legislation that limits, uh, cities authority over zoning and building. Um, it's kind of a hot topic because it hasn't gone away and we expect it to be reintroduced, which limits our, um, the scope of what we can and can't do. Governing it from a state level versus a local level. Um, any questions? That's all I have. Oh, great. Item fourteen? Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.